I order some public hearing of the Commerce and Economic Development Committee on Bills Number 140639 and 150010. My name is W. Wilson Good Jr., Chair of the Committee. I note that in the quorum is present, to my far left is Councilman Blondell Reynolds Brown, to my immediate left is Councilman Kenyatta Johnson, to my immediate right is Councilman Janie Blackwell, to my far right is Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Mark Squiller. Bill Number 140639 is being held as requested of sponsors. The title of Bill Number 150012, amending Chapter 17, 1600 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Economic Opportunity Plans, require that certain economic opportunity plans incorporate the requirements of the first source jobs policy contained in Chapter 17-2000 of the Philadelphia Code, all in certain terms and conditions. We have one panel, so I will call forward OEO and Philadelphia Works.
Can we take testimony from both witnesses and then open up for questions? Please state your name for the record and receive your testimony.
Good morning. My name is William Clark. I would like to say good morning to Chairman Good and all the members. I am the Director of Special Projects for the Office of Economic Opportunity. This morning, I'm here to read the testimony on behalf of Angela Dalberton, the Executive Director of the Office of Economic Opportunity regarding Bill 150010. Good morning, Chairman Good and members of the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development. My name is Angela Dalberton, and I am the Executive Director of the Office of Economic Opportunity. I'm here to testify on Bill Number 150010, which was introduced by Councilman Good on January 22nd, 2015. The bill would amend Chapter 17-1600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Economic Opportunity Plans to require that certain economic opportunity plans incorporate the requirements of the first source jobs policy contained in Chapter 17-200 of the Philadelphia Code. The Office of Economic Opportunity would be responsible for ensuring that any covered project or contract that's eligible under first source and also is reasonably anticipated to exceed $250,000, thus requiring an economic opportunity plan, would include language in its EOPs acknowledging the requirements of the first source job policy. The EOP would also require certification from the recipient of financial assistance or from the certifying agency, the Department of Commerce, that the recipient of financial assistance has entered into or committed to entering into a first source employment agreement as required by Section 17-2002. When signed, OEO would append the agreement of the corresponding EOP. The Office of Economic Opportunity supports this amendment and is prepared to take any necessary actions to meet the requirements of this legislation. OEO, on behalf of the Department of Commerce, will coordinate with recipients of financial assistance as defined by the first source legislation, and with our colleagues at the Philadelphia Works to incorporate this new requirement within qualifying EOPs. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this issue. I would be happy to respond to any questions that you may have.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Edwards?
Okay. Good morning, Chairman Good and members of the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development. I'm Mark Edwards, President and CEO of Philadelphia Works, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here today to testify in support of Bill Number 150010, legislation that requires economic opportunity plans to include statement acknowledging the receipt of first source requirements for contracts that were executed to exceed $250,000. We thank you, Councilman Good, for introducing this legislation and the work that you've done with my office to get us to where we are now. As a Workforce Investment Board for the City of Philadelphia, Philadelphia Works invests in employment and training solutions that connect employers to workforce talent and career seekers to jobs while ensuring the highest standards and accountability for those investments. In this capacity, we have been and continue to be committed to the success of the city's first source job policy. As we support the work of the Commerce Department and the city's implementation of this jobs creation policy, we conducted a comprehensive review of first source policies throughout the country by reaching out to eight other cities with similar types of legislation. Many of these other cities have had first source legislation for quite some time, and as a result, we asked for their input on lessons learned. During our conversations, a common theme arose: unless we implement an effective mechanism by which we can ensure, one, that all eligible projects are being captured, and, two, effective coordination between and among all parties, a first source jobs policy cannot meet its fullest potential. That makes sense. Unless, as a system, we're able to say that we have the ability to touch every contractor who qualifies for first source, we cannot truly measure our success in this initiative. When we spoke with Baltimore, for example, they had a staffer who spent an entire day just reviewing all city contracts to capture those that qualify for their first source policy. Given the technology and interagency coordination that takes place in our own city here in Philadelphia, we believe there can be better and more efficient safeguards for making sure that a qualifying first source project is not missed, and we believe this legislation is a critical step forward in that process to address these concerns that were faced in other cities. By coupling the economic opportunity plan with first source, we will increase our own ability to make sure that the first source is being applied to all projects that may qualify for it, and employers and contractors are certain to be aware of the requirements in the legislation and to abide by them. As we had these conversations with other cities and looked at our own first source law here in Philadelphia, we also see here a solid opportunity in which we can emerge as leaders in this area of job creation. For these reasons, we respectfully request a favorable report and that this committee approve this bill. Thank you to the members of council for the opportunity to testify, and I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thanks for your testimony, Mr. Edwards. More importantly, thank you and your staff for the extensive research you've done on best practices in terms of first source jobs policies. And we've had a law in the books for a couple of years, but I know you've taken the time to want to do it right, and there are many recommendations in terms of how to do it right utilizing best practices, and this is one of those in terms of how we monitor and enforce it. So I'm glad to do this piece of it. And with that, those are my only comments. I have no questions. Are there any questions for members of the committee? And let me note for the record, Councilman Brian O'Neil is here as well. Councilman Blackwell.
I wanted to say thank you as well. You've always been on the mark, and it's very important, a great step forward. Thank you. Thank you to the chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. During the process, it looks like you did a major review. Do you see where us as a city is lacking in maybe preparing the contractors and/or developers who receive subsidies from the city into participating in this?
I don't. In fact, as indicated in my testimony, based upon what we've seen and the conversations that we've been involved in, in partnership with Commerce, I really do think that this is an opportunity for Philadelphia to emerge as a leader. I mean, the first source policy just makes sense, right? You would think, why aren't a lot of cities doing this? And what we found in doing the research is that because many of the cities who are implementing this policy have a municipal entity responsible for serving as the lead entity, and they're working with the local public, its own local public workforce system, which is state-funded. And those systems are not always in alignment, and the state system is a very structured process by which all local workforce areas have to proceed. And so there's been a challenge of coordination between those two entities in all of the cities that we've seen. So in two cities, in the case of Baltimore and San Francisco, the local municipality actually developed its own staff with the responsibility for working with the public workforce system to move these matters forward. In the case of San Francisco, it worked for a while, and then it fell apart. So what we're saying here is that through this process of coordination with the legislation that's proposed today, we're taking our approach in such a way that we are connecting it to an existing system of oversight that already exists, and we think that through the kind of coordination that we're planning, it would work well. That's what we've seen. We haven't really, there's no silver bullet in any of the cities that we have seen. Nobody has really kind of cracked the nut on this, if I could use that term. Some cities have just focused solely on construction, and then some cities have taken a broader approach. And I think that the broader approach that we're taking in Philadelphia, connecting it with a system that actually exists, gives us a good path forward.
And we believe OEO is capable of being able to do that?
Yeah, we do. I mean, we'll have to continue to work with them on this, but I think that that system is in place, and we'll work with them to make sure that we do this in a good way.
And do you have a comment on it? Do you think that we could put something in place from OEO's standpoint as far as being able to monitor this? Because, I mean, listen, all bills, and we know as legislators, we put a lot of things into law, but it's enforcement and mechanism to watch it is what's really important. And if we're able to do that, it'll be successful. If we're not, we'll fall into some of the same categories some of the other cities have.
Yeah, one of the things I'll say on behalf of OEO is I think we are committed to working with Mark and his team, developing the right strategies to monitor this going forward, and we'll work it out together.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me also congratulate the collaboration that's taken place thus far. But I've learned, having been here for a minute, that commitment matters, and it's important, but it's a tangible, structural, logistical stuff that's put in place to make something real. So talk through what you mean when we say committed.
I'm gonna keep my comments brief, because I want to make sure that I don't misrepresent as Executive Director.
Of course.
But what I will say is that we are committed, and we will work with Mark and do whatever it takes to make sure that our economic opportunity plans, one, are inclusive of this policy, and then work with Mark to figure out what we think would be the best practice to make sure we monitor going forward.
So then, share with us, then, what current apparatus does your department have in place that monitors some of the other measures that have been put forth by this committee, most specifically Councilman Good? Is there a professional ID in a department whose specific responsibility is to oversee A, B, C, D, F, G? Help us out.
So we have specialists in our office.
Okay.
Who monitor EOP results.
Okay.
I too monitor EOP results for private projects, and typically what that looks like is we get feedback from the projects that we're working on, and we log our results in our various systems. We've made some adjustments over the past year to improve the way we collect data and analyze data. What I suspect will happen, and I can't promise this today, is that after meeting with Mark and other folks within Commerce Department, we will continue to make adjustments to our collection process. That will allow us to improve the reporting and analysis of the data that we collect.
Okay, that's very helpful. So in cities that get it right, are there any, Mark, you mentioned San Francisco, are there any others where best practices are in place and it's being implemented in a way that is intended to be?
Yeah. So we looked at the following cities: San Francisco, Los Angeles, Boston, Chicago, St. Louis, Baltimore, Miami Dade, and Kansas City. And again, it's a pretty broad range, but there are some common themes that we've seen where there is a clawback provision or some kind of enforcement, something happens to an employer if they don't comply with this. That's one of the things that we've seen that really make it work. Making sure that there is a very clear system for pushing the information out to projects that qualify or contractors who receive benefit from municipality that qualify, so that's another component of what we've seen that make it work. Systems that work in collaboration with the public workforce system, and some of the examples that I gave are another component that makes it work, because most municipalities don't have a system unless they are the municipality managing the public workforce system. Many of them don't have these systems that are already in place, and so working in collaboration with the Local Workforce Investment Board is another thing that we've seen that works. And so we're committed and have been working with Commerce for maybe like the last year or so to kind of step through a lot of what you've heard. So this is not work that's just been done in isolation by Philadelphia Works, it's actually been shared.
It wouldn't work.
Right. It's been shared with Commerce, and we work on it together to get to what the essence of the law was trying to achieve.
So what have been identified as some of the hurdles with OEO and/or Commerce that you've worked through already that's brought you to this point?
So the process of figuring out what goes to a contractor to make them aware that this exists, if it's written into the contract, if there's a particular form that we give them, that the contractor or beneficiary has to sign off on acknowledging receipt of the information, making them aware that this exists.
Okay.
Making sure that our system on our side has the ability to respond within the 10 days that our law requires us to respond to, and everybody being clear about when that clock starts. Those are some of the things that we've been able to work through so far.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the committee? Is there anyone else here to testify? Seeing none, we will move from our public hearing into a public meeting to consider Bill 150010. Chair recognizes Councilman Squiller for motion on Bill Number 150010.
150010, would you please be committed with suspension of rules?
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Bill Number 150010 is reported out of this committee with favorable recommendation and suspension of rules to allow first reading in next council session. It's a cool's our public meeting. Thank you very much. The hearing on Bill Number 140639 is recessed to the call of the chair.
Thank you again, all who are here and all who've come to hear more information about this important issue with regard to education. So the Education Committee is called into session, and we will ask the clerk to read the title of Resolution Number 140975.
Resolution authorizing Philadelphia City Council's Committee on Education to conduct public hearings to evaluate the benefits and effectiveness of the Philadelphia Talent Collaborative and other programs that help improve educational outcomes and the economic viability of the City of Philadelphia.
Thank you very much. Having said that, let me thank all responsible for the wonderful information and the great and the way it was prepared. As you all see, this Philadelphia Talent Collaborative publication is just wonderful. A great job has been done. I'd like to say I did it all myself, but it just wouldn't be true. We are very, very pleased for everything that all of you have done to help get us prepared and to come together to testify on this issue. We will now, we thank Councilman Wilson Good for being here. Others are in their offices and on their way. And we want to ask Graduate Philadelphia, Executive Director Barbara Matalman, Jim Murgiotti, President of Pierce College, Kevin Drayton, Pierce College graduate, Kimberly Low Sawyer, Chestnut Hill College graduate, and Alexander James, Graduate Philadelphia Board Member. We will invite them to come forward and to begin their testimony. Again, we thank you all, and we're very pleased and impressed to have you here to talk about all the exciting work that you're doing for our city and for students individually, one at a time, to try to help them be good students, successful adults, and to get the support they need. Thank you again. And for Ms. Matalman, let me say, you know, the tree doesn't fall far from, the fruit doesn't fall far from the tree. And Lucian Blackwell worked with her parents, I still work with them, her mother especially, and then I get the opportunity to work with her. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I just want to say, before I get started, we have one person who's not here yet and one person who's running late, so if we look like we're shifting around a little bit, I apologize for the disruption.
Not a problem.
So, good afternoon. I'm Barbara Matalman, Executive Director of Graduate Philadelphia. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Blackwell, and the members of the Education Committee and other council members and staff for welcoming me here today, along with my colleagues from Campus Philly, Philly Goes to College, and the Graduation Coach Campaign. Our four organizations formed the Talent Collaborative, and together we address all phases of the college-going pipeline in Philadelphia, driving more Philadelphians to get their college degrees, keeping more college students in the city after graduation, and raising college attainment in Philadelphia, which generates economic stability for families and economic growth for the city. Our impact and success can be seen in the growth of college graduates in Philadelphia over the past 10 years, with college attainment rising from 22% to 28.4%, or an additional 63,620 residents with college degrees. And we know that 58% of the city's economic success is directly attributable to the percent of adults with college degrees. Working in close partnership will only help us get us there faster. With small staff and budgets, our four organizations are at full capacity. We've asked the Commerce Department of the City of Philadelphia to provide increased support for our programs so we can truly function as a collaborative, serve more Philadelphians, and achieve greater impact. We wanted the members of city council, some of whom we've had the opportunity to work closely with, to be aware of our goal to function as a true collaborative and the need for additional resources to do that. So what we seek to achieve includes engaging college students in the work of the Graduation Coach Campaign and Philly Goes to College to serve as mentors and advisors to current high school students, accelerating internships for college students and adults returning to college so that they're workforce-ready when they complete their degrees, reaching more adults who have some college but no degree by combining the efforts of the Graduation Coach Campaign and Graduate Philadelphia and their outreach and training for adults. Through these and other collaborative activities, our goal is to raise college attainment from 24% to 30% by 2018, and we believe with additional resources to reach out into the community, we have the program, expertise, and proven track record to achieve this goal. We will each be telling you some specifics about our programs and hope we have your support in our efforts to reach and serve more Philadelphians. Now, I'd like to focus my attention on my organization, Graduate Philadelphia. Graduate Philadelphia works with comebackers, adults who have some college credit and want to complete their college degree. In Philadelphia, there are over 70,000 adults in this situation. Over 70% of the comebackers we serve are African-American, female, and heads of household. 88% are ages 19 to 55, and 90% earn less than $42,000, with half earning less than As you can see from the materials in the packet of information we have provided to council, we've worked with over 4,500 adults, including 3,700 Philadelphia residents, and we've had over 600 of our students graduate. Philadelphia is the fifth-largest city in the country, yet it ranks 86th out of the 100 largest cities in educational attainment. And as you know, low college completion rates are correlated with higher individual debt and higher unemployment. We are the only organization in Philadelphia working with adult comebackers, and we provide free advising services to and through degree completion. Helping adults get their degree enables them to apply for jobs with family-sustaining wages. The return on investment for our city is well worth our efforts, and this is really about economic development. Comebackers stop out for many reasons. As you recognize, they're stuck. They've invested time and money in college but cannot reap the benefits. As a society, we started to support them with federal and state financial aid, but when they stopped out, mostly because life happens, there were almost no resources to help them get back on track. We need to help them figure out not only how they can finance their education, but also how the best college fit, which might include either in-person or online classes, and the best course of study, which will lead to a career where there are jobs available. Many adults take four to six years to complete their degree. Oftentimes, students come to us with two or three transcripts to review. They might have tried to return to school before but just didn't finish. After an initial visit, we are in contact, either through additional in-person meetings, email, or phone calls, and we support our students all the way through graduation. We work in close partnership with 10 colleges and universities that are experienced in working with adult students to co-provide advising services. It's not enough to just help our students re-enroll. We need to guide them until they get their diploma. With support from Graduate Philadelphia, we know that students can be successful. Looking at our five-year cohort from the 2008-2009 class, we know that students who persisted, meaning they took a class every single semester, had a 79% graduation rate. Without our help, they probably would not have finished with their degree at all. Our work is really that important. So for example, several years ago, prior to my working at Graduate Philadelphia, I ran into a former babysitter who I knew had stopped out of college a few years before. She met a guy, got married, had a few kids, but I knew from her mother that she was concerned about what kind of role model she would be for her kids when it came time for them to go off to college. When I told her about Graduate Philadelphia, she started to cry, and my first thought was I had stepped over the line into her private business, and she was angry at me for butting in. I couldn't have been more wrong. Two weeks later, she called to tell me that she had registered for school and was going back to college. She specifically said she had wanted to do that for a while but just didn't know how, and Graduate Philadelphia's advisors were there to help her get started. I applaud the work that's being done to assure that our children get to college and complete their degree. Much of my past work has included this sector. However, largely missing from the conversation is the issue of the huge number of adults who either haven't started or haven't completed their college degree and the effect that has on their children. We know that the single largest risk factor for students not completing a degree is not having a parent or an adult in their lives who has also completed. Therefore, every adult we help helps the people in their family and social circle succeed. Graduate Philadelphia is working closely with the organizations you will hear from today in an effort to enhance all of our work by serving Philadelphians along the educational pipeline. Helping students from middle school to high school to college, no matter what their age and on to careers, is our goal, and by working closely together, our collaboration makes our impact even stronger. We are true partners, and we look forward to working even more closely in the upcoming year. Today, you'll hear from two of Graduate Philadelphia's board members and two of our comebackers who will share their personal stories of success. We couldn't be more proud of their accomplishments, not only for completing their degree, but mostly for overcoming significant barriers and not letting any setbacks deter them from graduating. Their stories are truly inspiring. Thank you for being here today and showing your support for our work and for all the students in Philadelphia who benefit from our work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me note again, we already mentioned Councilman W. Wilson Good. To his right is Councilman Mark Squiller, and to my left is Councilman David O. Thank you all for being here. Are there any questions or comments?
Okay, next, we're going to hear from Kimberly Low Sawyer. You're just to pull up another chair.
Welcome. Good afternoon. Please identify yourself for the record and then begin your testimony.
My name is Kimberly Low Sawyer.
Great.
Ready?
Yes.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kimberly Low Sawyer. Completing my education has impacted my life in numerous ways. As my daughter's first role model and teacher, I have been instilling a value system consisting of resilience and self-preservation. As my daughter was entering first grade, I felt this was an ideal time for both mother and daughter to go to school. Therefore, in the summer of 2007, I decided to visit the Graduate Philadelphia Center City Office. Time and opportunity presented itself on that day. The atmosphere was warm and receptive. The staff was inviting and genuine in their desire to answer questions. They were quite resourceful. The college representatives were present. The college representatives were present on-site, which made the legwork minimal. A few questions later, I was preparing for enrollment at Chestnut Hill College. The transition between inquiring about returning to college and actually becoming a student was easier than ever expected. While pursuing my bachelor's degree at Chestnut Hill College, Graduate Philadelphia continued to support me throughout my educational journey. Graduate Philadelphia, along with family and friends, has shared my excitement in going back to school. They have become part of my village. It has rewarded me good grades, a place on the dean's list, and the confidence to further my degree program beyond a bachelor's degree. I completed my bachelor's degree in 2011, and in 2012, I completed my master's degree in Administration of Human Services. Currently, I am a third-year doctorate student at Holy Family University. My major is in the field of education with a concentration in Leadership and Professional Studies. My research is focusing on the adult learner in higher education. Simply, my research mimics my life. It is my goal to use my experience in education to speak about the importance of social support in adults pursuing a college degree. Personal fulfillment is one example of how completing my education will impact my life. Financial security is surely another. Having a solid career where I can earn a comfortable salary is quite an incentive for an aspiring college graduate. A college degree may also enable me to choose an occupation with a flexible work schedule. Extended hours away from home should not be the norm, especially for parents. Maintaining a nurturing, consistent, and attentive approach to the upbringing of my child is paramount. Now that our country has its first African-American president, I truly believe I can go as far as I can dream. There are no more excuses. Poor self-esteem and lack of motivation has hindered many people from living at their fullest potential. I was that person. I desire a career as a motivational speaker. I want to assist the homeless, the unemployed, and the other individuals who may be experiencing despair find the appropriate resources to get back on track. In closing, I will mention to the overall impact of achieving this academic milestone. Being a first-generation college graduate will hopefully inspire a new tradition in my family. When looking for new employment, a college degree will give me an extra boost of confidence and an advantage. Regardless of past circumstances, I intend to convey to other adults that it's never too late to further your education and pursue your dreams. I am so grateful for Graduate Philadelphia for they have given me the opportunity to speak about this wonderful program that changed my life. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stowe. Any questions or comments? Thank you.
I'd like to make one comment to Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you. I think you're an inspiration to all of us here in Philadelphia and what it means that I think you should be looked up to from a lot of the young people here in the city of Philadelphia, knowing that if you have the heart and desire, and we have organizations like this to help you, that anything could be achieved. So thank you for coming here and testifying today. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We certainly agree.
Mr. James?
Good afternoon, honorable members of City Council. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak with you about Graduate Philadelphia. My name is Alexander James, and I, as one of their board members, am happy to speak with you about the important work we do to support adults who have some come... who have some college credits and want to complete their degree. First, I would like to share some personal thoughts. As I journeyed through college, I had both support and encouragement. In addition to family, there were those in the school who assisted in helping me navigate my educational path. Fortunately, I was able to graduate in four years. As a result, I enjoyed the benefit associated with college education through career advancement and smooth transitions during challenging economic times. I can attest to the financial benefit and job opportunities a college degree has afforded me. As a single parent, I often shared my experience with my daughter and encouraged her to likewise pursue a post-secondary education. Like many students, she started college at Temple University right out of high school and then chose to stop out for a bit before returning to school to complete her degree in 2013. I was fortunate enough to be able to provide her with both guidance and financial support. However, there are thousands who, like my daughter, step away from school every day but lack the information and support to return to complete their degree. These are the adults that Graduate Philadelphia serves. We all know someone who started their undergraduate degree, and because life happened, they stopped. Some try to return to school, but without family and financial help, it is difficult to successfully return and finish a degree. Many private corporations offer financial assistance through tuition reimbursement programs, but many longtime employees never elect to tap into these benefits because they don't know how to get started. And most working adults don't even have these benefits and need to find a way to finance their education through grants, scholarships, and loans. The weight of financing their degree and juggling coursework and family commitments often serve to discourage them. The result is unrealized potential of employees and the lack of internal promotional opportunities. I know this firsthand, having spent my entire career in the private sector working for large corporations. If we want our employees to be able to earn family-sustaining wages and have job-growth opportunities, we have to help them to return to school and finish their college degree so they can get ahead in life. Graduate Philadelphia's unique model of supporting adults to and through degree completion assures that once adults take that all-important first step toward returning to school, that they continually get the advising service and guidance they need to be successful. Without support, most won't complete their degree. Outreach efforts to over 70,000 Philadelphians who started their degree and never finished is the key to getting students to work with this outstanding organization, and we are grateful to work with City Council members and their staffs to make sure that anyone who wants to finish their degree can get the help they need. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. James. Thank you.
Good afternoon, honorable members of City Council. My name is Kevin C. Drayton, and I received both my associate's degree and bachelor's degree from Pierce College with honors. There is a popular saying, "Give a man a fish, he will eat for a day; teach him how to fish, he will eat for a lifetime." The advisors at Graduate Philadelphia understood or understands this philosophy, and they understood that it had evolved. It needed to evolve. That you need to provide more support and empower adults to do more. Basically, Graduate Philadelphia gave me a morning wake-up call, held my hand when I needed to go to the right pond to catch those fish, and even showed me the best bait for the fish I was hoping to catch. They gave me hands-on support. Without their assistance, it would have been very difficult, next to impossible, to navigate my path to achieve my educational goal. Graduate Philadelphia knew that you must change your mindset, ones habits, to embrace a new challenge, a new goal. They helped me develop a different way of thinking and helped me to step out of my comfort zone. For me, Graduate Philadelphia's attention to the details about my needs resulted in a perfect match. Pierce College wasn't just a school I wanted to attend. Pierce was the college I needed to attend. Graduate Philadelphia helped me to discover what was the best fit was for me, what the best fit was for me, and more importantly, what I needed. Thanks to the outstanding support and encouragement from Graduate Philadelphia and, of course, Pierce College, I stayed on course and completed their goal on June 9, 2014, graduating with honors, an elected member of Delta Mu Delta International Honor Society, and also fortunately recognized in Who's Who among students in American universities and colleges. I completed all this despite my greatest challenge after losing two family members in my final semester. I couldn't be more proud of my accomplishments and, as you can tell, the work of Graduate Philadelphia. By the way, my graduation from Pierce College wasn't the end. It was the beginning of a new goal, a new business to support those head-of-household single mothers in the city of Philadelphia. And I'm also hoping to pursue my MBA degree soon.
Thank you very much. You're proud, and we're very, very proud of you and your accomplishments as well. The chair notes that the vice chair is here. Councilwoman Blomdel Reynolds Brown, thank you.
This is where we're going to change up the program a little bit. Jim Margiotti couldn't be here and attend a funeral, and Michael Shermer from Pierce College will be reading his testimony.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Give us your name again.
Thank you. My name is Michael Shermer.
Spell your last name. Thank you.
Thank you. And good afternoon, members of City Council. As I've mentioned, my name is Michael Shermer, and I am a resident of District 1 and an associate professor of Business Administration and the chair of the Business Division at Pierce College. And I want to thank you for allowing me the time today to testify on behalf of Graduate Philadelphia. Although I am here today for this purpose, I would also like to note that Pierce College is one of Campus Philly's partners as well. As was mentioned, I'm also speaking on behalf of the president of Pierce College, Jim Margiotti. Mr. Margiotti is also a Graduate Philadelphia board member. As it has been for most of its 150-year existence, Pierce College is focused on serving the older adult student with career-oriented programs. Today, 90% of Pierce College's 2,600-plus students are 25 years of age or older. Nearly 80% of those live in the city of Philadelphia. The large majority are first-generation college students trying to fit the acquisition of employer-valued skills and credentials into a schedule dominated by professional and personal responsibilities. Most seek a college degree as a means of staying above the poverty line, and many do so to spawn future generations of college graduates in their families. As was mentioned previously, these students are called comebackers, not because they were all previously in college, but because they are returning to education as a means to achieve their goal of earning a middle-class sustaining wage. Some had the chance to attend college earlier in life, and they did not complete. Many never had the opportunity to attend college. In both cases, they may not have had the navigation skills and support necessary to achieve success. These students are every bit as important to the city's workforce and economic development as our traditional-age students. Most still have 30-plus years of career runway ahead of them. They learn in Philadelphia, live in Philadelphia, work in Philadelphia, and pay taxes in Philadelphia. They provide something that cannot be imported, in other words, workforce supply for $40,000 to $70,000 annual jobs that make Philadelphia businesses go and grow. They also generate a multiplier effect. When they earn a college degree and become a skilled worker, so do their children, and often so do others in their communities who witness the benefits of their success. Pierce College joined Graduate Philadelphia as a founding partner at its inception back in 2005. Graduate Philadelphia focuses on providing that all-important bridge for older adults seeking to complete college degrees. Systems, policies, and programs at colleges and universities and related agencies are almost exclusively focused on facilitating recent high school grads transitioning to college. Adult comebackers seeking paths to college have more complex situations and far less support. These folks have far more advanced work and life issues to manage. Moreover, they do not have guidance counselors or parents to assist them. Graduate Philadelphia fills that gap and more with free advising services on successfully choosing a college, seeking admission, and applying for financial aid. Many of these folks have significant family responsibilities and financial stresses to balance. They lack essential information about available programs and time-management skills needed to complete a college degree. Graduate Philadelphia, with its emphasis on eliminating those barriers in a very supportive, nurturing way, is the perfect solution for this very important comebacker population in Philadelphia. Older students that matriculate at Pierce College through the Graduate Philadelphia program perform extremely well. There are several examples, and you have already heard from Kevin Drayton about his experience. They have the support systems, and most importantly, the navigation skills to utilize them effectively. Mr. Margiotti joined the Graduate Philadelphia Board a few years ago in order to participate personally in the organization's mission, which is so closely tied to Philadelphia's workforce and economic development. He believes passionately in the organization's work and regrets deeply that inadequate funding has not permitted scaling up to reach more Philadelphians to date. We come to you today to tell you about our important work and thank you for your continued support of this program, which is vital to Philadelphia's battles against poverty and for maintaining a strong local workforce that can grow existing businesses and attract new ones. Providing financial support to Graduate Philadelphia is a great investment with a strong return on that investment for our city. Thank you again for allowing me the time to testify on Graduate Philadelphia's behalf.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Thank you.
I just wanted to add that the president of Pierce College, Jim Margiotti, just ran in. So if there's any questions, I just wanted to thank him. I know he was dealing with a lot of things today to get here. He had wanted to give the testimony himself. Thank you very much for coming today. A few questions about Pierce. Mr. Margiotti would be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, for rushing to be here. We understand you had a funeral, and we appreciate your support. Any comments or questions for the president? Blomdel Reynolds Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Good afternoon. Could you please share with us any financial level of partnership that you are in with Philly Goes to College? Pierce.
With Pierce. Would you like to speak?
I'd be curious to know, of the partners that are partners, what is the financial commitment attached to the actual mission of this effort?
So for all the partners?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. President.
Good afternoon. Please identify yourself for us for the record.
Sure. I'm Jim Margiotti. I'm the president of Pierce College.
Thank you.
And we do have an annual financial commitment that we make to Graduate Philadelphia. I believe it's about $9,500 per year
I see.
that we provide as members of that organization, members of that institution. You asked about Philly Goes to College as well?
Yes.
The Philly Goes to College, I don't believe we pay an annual fee for, but one of the things that Pierce was able to do when that organization was started was we contributed computers and also provided some training in the utilization, so some in-kind support for the development of that organization on behalf of the mayor's administration.
All of that has great value as well.
And the Grad Coach Campaign. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman O.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for being here. I would be remiss if I did not thank the President of Pierce College, Jim Mergiotti. Every year when we hold our youth nonprofit symposium, he provides the space for free and it's a wonderful service. So thank you very much.
We're honored to do that, Councilman, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Graduation Coach Campaign.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
Just ask Barbara Matalman to come back, please.
Absolutely. You wanted to ask Barbara Matalman a question?
Yes.
Ms. Matalman?
Barbara.
Barbara, question.
I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Blondale Reynolds Brown wants to ask you a question.
Yeah.
So is it, I'm trying to get a handle based on graphics and testimony here, that Graduation Coach, Campus Philly, Graduate Philadelphia, the Talent Collaborative are all under the Mayor's Office of Communication Education?
No.
No.
Graduate Philadelphia is its own separate organization.
Standalone, 501(c)(3).
So, yes, we are under the Graduate Network. So we're a program of the Graduate Network. Campus Philly is its own private as well. The Graduation Coach Campaign and Philly Goes to College are in the Mayor's Office of Education. So maybe you're confused because I used to be the Director of those programs, so...
I am confused.
Yes, sorry.
Okay.
That's why, so I'm at Graduate Philadelphia now, no longer with the city.
Okay. So with the list of testifiers, is someone here from the Mayor's Office of Education?
Yes. That would be Graduate, Philly Goes to College, and the Graduation Coach Campaign. They're both in the Mayor's Office of Education.
And somewhere in these documents are the budgets?
We did not provide the budgets for the individual organizations. That's something that we can get, we can give you if you're interested in that.
Yes, if you could get that information to the Chair.
Okay.
And what the city is contributing through the Mayor's Office of Education and what the nonprofits are contributing to these efforts that you, these organizations that you...
Yes.
I'm looking to see where the linkages are.
Yes.
And you can't tell by this?
So the linkages that we're talking about today are not monetary. When, for, I can tell you for Graduate Philadelphia and the other people testifying, we have prepared that information to talk about. For Graduate Philadelphia, our annual budget is $800...
I need to see it in writing because I'm not going to remember the numbers.
Okay.
So if you would just forward that to the Chair.
Okay. So just so you know that we are not financially bound to each other.
Okay. Okay, then.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you as well. All right. Graduation Coach Campaign. Sayye Hormozzi, Director. Linda Maldonado, Philadelphia School District Parent and Family Coordinator. Kanisha Smith, Graduation Coach Campaign Director, Trainer, and Sahaba Thompson, Graduation Coach. Welcome and thank you very much.
Thank you. Just wanted to make a quick note that Linda Maldonado's mother passed away, and so she could not be here with us today, and Caroline LaRochelle will be reading her testimony for her. And then also Sahaba Thompson was ill this morning. His daughter also has the flu, so he will not be here. And so, and he did not provide his testimony in advance, so he will not be, nor will his testimony be part of the record.
All right. So we'll note when each person speaks, we'll make the substitution.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Feel free to identify yourself for the record and begin the testimony.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Blackwell and distinguished members of Council's Education Committee. My name is Sayye Hormozzi, and I am the Director of the Graduation Coach Campaign. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about the Graduation Coach Campaign, which is one of the four talent development organizations which form the Philadelphia Talent Collaborative. I'd like to begin by telling you a little bit about my road to this seat today. I was born in Iran in 1980, one year after the Iranian Revolution that led to the capture of hostages at the American Embassy and three months before the start of the Iran-Iraq War. Brand-new parents, my mother and father, were faced with a decision. Stay in their home country, near their families, in hopes that the situation would improve despite growing more grim and terrifying each day, or flee to America, the place where my father had started college years before, a place where they had no family but where they knew their daughter could grow up with a future, one that Iran could no longer provide her. They chose the US, and immediately after immigrating, my parents worked two to three jobs while they learned English and cared for me. Yet it wasn't long before my father started his own computer business and my mother opened her own beauty salon after graduating from beauty school. We were the epitome of the American dream. However, despite how resourceful my parents were and despite how much they stressed education in my home, they were frequently incapable of giving me any practical advice or help when it came to school. They did not go to high school in the US and my father never finished his degree. They couldn't help me with my homework. They couldn't tell me what the SAT was, let alone when I should be taking it. They wanted me to go to college, but they had no idea how to help get me there. I felt behind my peers with American parents and frustrated and lost in school. Overwhelmed with the process of going to college and not knowing where to start, I retreated inside and began to proclaim that I didn't care about graduating high school and I didn't want to go to college anyway. I was completely dejected and my parents were helpless. It wasn't until Mrs. Carol, a neighbor and a mother of a classmate, noticed our struggle and reached out to my parents and talked with me. A former teacher herself, she began by doing the simplest thing, asking me questions. How was I doing in school? How was I feeling about my future? What did I want for my life after high school? And many more. It wasn't until she engaged my family and me that she was able to figure out how to help. She reassured me that although things were seeming overwhelming, it wasn't too late to turn things around and that she would walk me through everything I needed to do. I will never forget sitting at her kitchen table strewn with college materials while she walked me through the application process. Mrs. Carol did not intensively mentor me for an extended period of time. She did not sit down and do homework with me after school or shoot hoops with me. She simply asked me the right questions at a time when I needed help and pointed me in the right direction. Mrs. Carol was my graduation coach, even though she didn't realize it at the time. And it's because of her that I am here. It's because of her that I am so passionate about the Graduation Coach Campaign and the impact that I know it can have firsthand. The campaign wants every Philadelphia student to have a Mrs. Carol in his or her life, someone who will talk to them, answer their questions, and give them the support they need. The campaign seeks to support parents like mine, to teach them how to support their students, to teach them how to navigate complicated processes that may be foreign to them because perhaps they themselves are foreign, or because, are foreigners, or because they never finished school, or because it's been so long since they did that the new landscape feels foreign to them no matter where they are from. We want every adult in this city to feel compelled to do what Mrs. Carol did, to reach out to a student and his or her family who so clearly need help and talk to them, ask them the right questions, and point them in the right direction. At the campaign, we believe every successful person can point to at least one adult who changed the course of their lives when they were a youth, an adult who helped support and guide them through a pivotal time, someone who planted a seed in their minds that they could excel and achieve. The Graduation Coach Campaign is not a prescribed mentorship program. We do not match adults or give them a curriculum to follow. Instead, we believe that every adult knows at least one student, be it their own child, a niece, a nephew, a student they coach on a sports team, or a young person they encounter every week bagging their groceries. We believe that empowering and educating these adults to approach and engage these students, we can send all young people in Philadelphia the same message, that they can graduate from high school and move on to some type of post-secondary attainment that will enable them to get and keep family-sustaining jobs. Also, that there are adults in their network that can help them along this journey. The campaign does this in three ways. The first is by conducting in-person training sessions, which we call training camps. And if I could please turn your attention to the screen to your left, you're going to watch a brief video that will explain it much better than I can.
And despite of their own past, and people are understanding that some type of thing that they're experiencing in college, back in their lives, this is necessary to see how, there are other people who have the lights in the same way. And adults often, especially if you need to take that path, they don't have the knowledge of these resources. So it's so important for people to be able to have this information. They come here so hungry, they're like, how can I support the young people in my life? Maybe it's better than what I have, or maybe that the path I use here, I have, to be a college student. A training camp is a fun and interactive in-person workshop where adults can come together and learn how to better support their students through high school and onto college and successful careers.
I know for my kids, college is a little bit of a risk, but it's many forms. So, you know, if you're not willing to go to college, finish college, you know, there's a good chance of, you know, there's a future.
When you go to a training camp, you'll find people, other adults, just like you, who want help to develop. So for example, you'll find other parents, grandparents, mentors. Sometimes we can have principals who come to the training camps. And then during the training camp, when we're giving this presentation, you can always feel free to raise your hand and ask questions and share your own thoughts. This is part of what makes the training camp so dynamic and so informative for our coaches. Once you leave a training camp, you will be armed with a whole variety of resources that you can use, for example, to guide your student through high school applications or to help them finance college. But just as importantly, you will leave being able to talk more meaningfully with your students. You'll be able to guide them through important decisions and help them through challenges that they are facing in their life. At the end of a training camp, you will always leave with one immediate action step that you can take so that when you go home, you can start applying all these principles into practice and help guide your student to success.
Because it gave us different ideas to be able to communicate, especially with our teenage son, because he's in ninth grade right now. So it was important for us to hear what she had to say.
There are so many adults that want the best for the young people in their life.
So in addition to the training camp showcased in the video, we also have a college-specific training camp that helps adults filter through the sea of conflicting information they encounter about the college-going process so that they can give their students the best advice for their individual circumstances. To date, we have trained 5,490 coaches. If you look at the map to your right, which is also included in your packets, you can see exactly where those training camps have taken place by council manic district and where coaches currently reside. Not pictured on this map, but also included in your packets, are two other maps which break down our workshops by areas of need, neighborhoods with the highest concentrations of poverty and lowest concentrations of high school diplomas. We are incredibly proud of the work that we've done in the four short years that we've been in existence, but are looking forward to seeing more blue dots and purple dots for the Spanish-speaking workshops in all Philadelphia districts and neighborhoods. The second way we train our adults is through our video game plans. Many of our coaches have jobs with long hours, along with childcare concerns that make it difficult for them to attend one of our training camps in person. So it became quickly evident to us that we needed to meet coaches where they are, on their phones, tablets, laptops, and television sets. The 10- to 15-minute video game plans allow us to not only reach a wider audience, but to also go in-depth on issues in a way that is difficult to do in a 90-minute training camp. To create the game plans, we partner with local organizations that are experts in the content area that we aim to explain to our coaches. It is through this partnership strategy that we have been able to expose our coaches to the myriad programs in the city that might be able to serve them. The game plans are mobile-ready and available on YouTube, Comcast On Demand, Philly in Focus, and our very own Channel 64. If you could please turn your, return your attention to the screen, I have a quick clip of our game plan called "Five Key Skills Your Student Needs to Succeed." In this clip, we explain the research-based importance of resilience and how to cultivate it in a student.
Great way to stimulate curiosity. The third key strength is resilience. Resilience is the ability to continually overcome challenges. Most students will face obstacles on their path to academic and career success. Some of these obstacles may be directly school-related, such as having trouble understanding school subjects, but others of these obstacles may be more personal, such as the conflict with friends at school. Whatever obstacles they face, all students must learn to overcome before succeed. So how can you help your student become more resilient? First, ask your student what challenges he or she has already overcome in the past. By reflecting on past challenges, your student can recognize that adversity is not permanent. Remind your student regularly that there is a positive in your, that current challenges won't last forever. Second, help your student recognize his or her internal strength. You can do this by praising your student for his or her courage and persistence. When students face major challenges, it can be easy for them to feel overwhelmed. However, in the face of adversity, even a small step can be a major accomplishment. Students should feel proud of their ability to overcome adversity. Finally, try to create a safe and structured environment for your student. When students are overwhelmed by obstacles, they may feel that they have little control over their lives. Give your student a sense of stability and security. For example, sign him or her up for an after-school program or simply establish a daily routine. When students find some consistency in their chaotic lives, they can start to feel safer expressing themselves and making mistakes. Above all, believe in your power as a graduation coach. For students facing adversity, having even one supportive and caring adult can make a huge difference. The next question is a...
Thank you. And we have one final click, one final clip. That is from our partnership with Clarify College. This helps students and their families make wise financial decisions when it comes to getting their degrees.
Why am I going to school? Ideally, your student should have some sense of what career field they would like to pursue. But you want to make sure your student attends a college that is right for them financially, not just any college. Taking on loans for a school they cannot afford to pay back often leaves students unable to reap the financial benefits of getting their degree in the first place. It is important that students have a plan when entering college and that they are committed to graduating. Once your student has a career selected, they can start to narrow down the list of schools where they want to apply. Students should consider a range of schools at a range of prices with the major that will help them meet their career goals. Is it a good investment? Once you and your student have chosen about three to five potential colleges, you'll want to make sure that those colleges will be a good investment. It's a good idea to apply to at least one public university, but remember that private colleges are often more generous with scholarships. Public universities are not always the cheapest option once all the financial aid is applied.
Since...
At City Year, we focus our efforts on early...
So since September of 2014, when our game plans officially launched, we have garnered over 2,800 views on YouTube. With promotional help from our partners, social media, and scholarship contests which incentivize viewing the game plans, we hope to see these numbers only continue to rise. The third and final tier to the Graduation Coach Campaign's strategy is a grassroots approach in the Kensington area, Councilwoman Squilla and Councilwoman Quinona Sanchez's districts. With help from geographic information systems, we identified Kensington as an area with low rates of home internet access, so they wouldn't be able to see our game plans, high poverty and low college attainment rates. With help from geographic information systems, we identified Kensington as an area with low rates of home internet access, so they wouldn't be able to see our game plans, high poverty and low college attainment rates. In response, we have been strategically distributing education-related information and resources in print to community members by canvassing while wearing red caps and gowns, placing information in our signature red graduation station kiosks in corner stores, barber shops, salons, health centers, and laundromats. We also attend community meetings, back-to-school nights, cleanups, graduations, and local talent shows. We are always there to help adults in that community help their students. If you look at the map to your right, this is an updated map of the Kensington area, and you will see exactly where we have focused our efforts in Kensington. We have attended forty-three meetings, events, and cleanups in the area. To date, we have distributed more than sixteen thousand printed resources in both English and Spanish, which include not only our Resource Guide, which, there is an example of that in your packet, but also materials from other government agencies and nonprofits. We have seen great success with this grassroots approach, as community members have come to recognize us and ask us for help, sometimes education-related, sometimes not. Regardless, we always follow up with responses to the questions. We know the answers to and referrals for the questions that we don't. It is on that note that I'd like to introduce you to Caroline La Rochelle. She is our Outreach Manager, and she is going to be reading the testimony of Linda Maldonado, whose mother passed away and could not be with us today. Next will be Kwanisha Smith, a Certified Graduation Coach Campaign Trainer, who will tell you about her experience conducting our training camps firsthand. Our impact and success can be seen in the stories that Kwanisha and Caroline will share, that in the steady rise of graduation rates from fifty-seven percent when the campaign started to sixty-four percent today, and while that increase is heartening, we have more work to do. Nationwide mentoring relationships, the kind encouraged and supported by the Graduation Coach Campaign, have been found to increase students' chances of graduating by one-point-five-three times and to increase their chances of attending college by one-point-six-five times. Students with natural mentors are more likely to say they enjoy school and feel that it is important, and that they believe that they can succeed even when their schoolwork is hard. This model works, and we see it in the city's increasing graduation rate, and we hear it from our coaches. We hope to continue to send even more graduates to our partners at Philly Goes to College for helping, to help get their degrees, to graduate Philadelphia if they encounter roadblocks, and to Campus Philly to encourage them to stay here and contribute to our tax base once they do earn their degrees. So Chairwoman Blackwell, distinguished members of the Education Committee, thank you for your time and for all you do to support education in the city of Philadelphia, and for your continued support of the Graduation Coach Campaign.
Thank you. Thank you so much for hearing us, honorary council members. My name is Caroline La Rochelle, and I am the Outreach Manager-
Spell your last name.
La Rochelle, L-A, space, R-O-C-H-E-L-L-E.
One more time.
L-A, space, R-O-C-H-E-L-L-E. Caroline La Rochelle, but today I will be reading the testimony of Linda Maldonado. Dear Members of City Council, I started working at the School District of Philadelphia as a Parent Coordinator in September of 2013. And since then, I was able to attend different events and workshops for parents. One of them was the Graduation Coach Workshop that was presented at the Parent Resource Center of the school district. I'm from Guatemala, and as an immigrant, I have dreams too. I'm a mother of two teenagers. My older one graduated from high school in 2014, and my younger one will graduate this year from W.B. Saul High School. I did not have any information about the college application process, so attending the Graduation Coach Workshop was very useful for me and for my daughter. The college application process is overwhelming for everybody, parents, students, counselors, especially among the minority communities. We learn the process step by step, information about colleges, careers, statistics, resources, deadlines, scholarships, and more. Personally, for us, the Graduation Coach Campaign was our guide through the whole process. I didn't know, but I became the coach for my own daughter. I learned the process, I was thinking about the deadlines, I helped her to collect documents, I encouraged her to write the essays on time, I told her to call the administration offices of the colleges for updates, and I encouraged my daughter to check her email often. So I implemented all the things that I learned from the Graduation Coach Campaign. My daughter was successfully accepted at Penn State University Main Campus, where she currently is a freshman majoring in journalism. Recently, she was awarded three different scholarships, which we learned about through the Graduation Coach Campaign. Suddenly, I spread this information to the counselors, principals, and parents in the schools that I work with. During my parents' meetings, I always encourage them to attend these workshops, especially since they are able to conduct the workshops in English and Spanish as well. I distribute materials to the parents and students in both languages. Later, I started bringing the Graduation Coach Workshop to the high schools for parents and students, at which they were able to ask questions and learn more from them directly. Programs like the Graduation Coach Campaign are so important to keep in our community for one major reason. There are many organizations that provide information about colleges. There are many written resources out there about the process. There are many educational entities who conduct general workshops to parents, et cetera. However, the Graduation Coach Campaign is unique in the sense that it shows you how to become a coach. I have learned from my own experience that students don't go to college many times, not because they don't know the process, not because they don't get the information, not because they don't have the money, not because they don't have good grades. They don't go to college because they don't have a coach. Students need help, they need support, they need to have somebody close to them to guide them through the process, they need somebody to help them to organize and submit documents, they need somebody close to them to push them and motivate them, somebody to help with the essays, somebody to help them watch the deadlines, to have somebody keep them on the right track. Only a coach can do that, and a graduation coach can be a mother, like me, a friend, a neighbor, the teacher, a leader of a church, a leader of the community, et cetera. As we know, most of the public schools are short in personnel. They don't have enough counselors who guide the students through this process. The Graduation Coach Campaign is necessary, and they play a very important role in our schools and in our community. They teach you how you can become a coach. Remember, if we want to increase the number of students going to college, the key is that every student needs a coach. I just lost my mother, and she said, "The best heritage that you can leave your kids is education." Thank you, Members of City Council, for your time. Linda Maldonado.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Blackwell and Councilwoman Owen, and the rest of the Education Committee members. My name is Kwanisha Smith, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I've had the pleasure of coming before the Education Committee and the Philadelphia City Council on a few other occasions, through my role as the former Co-Executive Director of Action United, as well as a spokesperson for PCAPs, the Philadelphia Coalition Advocating for Public Schools. And today, I'm here, in here, in support of the Philadelphia Graduation Coach Campaign. I was introduced to the campaign when I chose to participate in a workshop, now what we refer to as training camps at the United Way. One thing I didn't include in my written testimony was that I too am a first-generation college student, and depended on adults and lots of other people to really get on to college and to graduate. So I first thought that this was a mentoring program, as I was looking for an opportunity to do that, but I found out that it was a citywide initiative to increase the capacities of adults to assist young people on their journey to high school graduation and beyond. I joined the workshop already having ten years of professional experience in training and youth development, and I was blown away by the information I received. The training camp not only increased my understanding of the skills and strengths that youth need to exceed and be confident today in our global workforce, but also strengthened my capacity to facilitate what the campaign calls "Key Conversations." So in these training camps, we teach adults how to use active listening skills and effective methods of praise, so that they can have meaningful and purpose, I'm sorry, and productive and purposeful conversations with the young people in their lives, so with their students. We help our coaches to discover and develop students' interests, as well as how to foster these teachable moments to lead the students to success. So through my participation in the training, as well as because of my professional background, the trainer that day invited me to the Train the Trainer preparation, and since 2011, I've been an active Graduation Coach Trainer and a huge proponent of the campaign. Over the past four years, I facilitated workshops in a variety of settings with a range of adults. So this includes community-based social service organizations with their leadership and staff, district and charter schools with their teachers, school staff, parents, and even high school students, and youth agencies with their direct service counselors. With all these groups ranging in professional experience and access to information, I've only received positive feedback about the quality of the training camps. Every attendee walked away with new information about the graduation and job situation here in the city, the skills and strengths students need today to succeed, key strategies for effective coaching, as well as information about city-run and local education support resources. In every workshop, no matter the population, I've heard adults exclaim how they did not know certain resources existed in the city. I've experienced youth, and we've all probably heard this, coming to the training camps proclaiming, "College is not for everyone," and they leave vocalizing their newfound understanding of how post-secondary education can impact their earning potential. As someone who has been on the front line of this campaign in various capacities, I urge you today to really maintain support for this programming, and even grant enough support so that it can increase its capacity to operate. The Graduation Coach Campaign fulfills a vast need in our city for support and information, as well as it demystifies the process of what it takes for youth to graduate from high school and succeed after it. Most importantly, the campaign's leadership, a lot of the folks here today, they remain current on effective strategies for outreach in order to support this effort. Just in the last year, the campaign revamped the workshops and the printed materials, and my favorite new strategy, which you got to see today, is the launch of a video campaign through YouTube, where coaches can acquire more in-depth information and instruction on such topics as that middle and high school transition, college application process, and skills for success. They constantly evolve and respond to the changing needs of both the adults and the youth in the city. The Graduation Coach Campaign is a necessary component to guaranteeing the success of Philadelphia students by educating family members and all the adults that touch these young people's lives. The biggest problem contributing to the opportunity gap is access to information and resources, including human resources. The campaign acts as a community organizing effort to engage a range of communities, including those most underserved, to make sure we are completely supporting and guaranteeing the current and future success of Philadelphia youth. I encourage you to maintain the support in this campaign as it's working. Philadelphia's graduation rate increased seven percent over the past five years, and this is one of the proven programs contributing to that change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you.